We will. The college. Through me and the city council that were. At five oh two. And we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Really, would you start us off?
I pledge allegiance. Okay. And to the republic. You should stand. On the nation.
Thank you. Little call please.
Dunkinson. Ben Summer.
Here.
Thompson here, Ben Blakem.
Here.
Elkin.
Here.
Blanum here, Manor.
Yeah.
Okay. First item is consent agenda items. If y'all have a chance to look at them.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda items, which are the minutes of the city council from June fifth, special council meeting, June eleventh, council meeting, June nineteenth, art arcs and recreation, um, May sixteenth, airport commission, May twenty-third, plan commission, June twenty-seventh, committee, the whole June twenty-fifth, personnel committee, June eleventh, finance commission, June eleventh, public safety commission, June eleventh, and recycling committee, April sixteenth.
I'll second that motion.
As the public should be able to see, the council has been quite busy in the last thirty days. Motion's made and seconded to approve the consent items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those. So word. I am number one, public comment. There anybody that has public comment?
Anyone want to talk about fireworks tomorrow? Just in case the events.
Know where they are.
Well, they're gonna be.
We'll cover them in the.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah.
Alright, well, yeah, now that I'm here is, uh, July fifth, which is Friday.
Friday.
Is the grand opening of the Ameri- American Historical Society Museum. Like one on Maple Street, which is just across the street from us, so I don't know if we got that on TV or not, but.
Don't have it on TV. I don't know if they have it on TV.
Okay, well.
Um.
That's what it is anyway.
It's also the giant ice cream social that day.
Okay.
Can we give some more detail about ice cream social?
We'll ask, we'll ask you to do a report too.
Talk about that during my report?
Sure. Hey, any other public comment? Alright, now your first up, marketing and promotions.
The mayor and council, um, over the past month, I have continued to look for grants for the city of Amory. Um, Mike tipped me off on, um, a video that I sat in on the other day. Um, so it looks like we might have some promising grants, possibly a recycling one, um, as well as, um, I spoke to Michaela before the meeting. There was a childcare one that the first round has gone out, but they may be doing a second round, and so I'm going to see if there's anything that we can qualify for there. Um, also over the past month, um, I've just been busy, um, trying to work on our social media presence in terms of advertising our things, music on the rhythm, Tuesday tunes, we are really starting to build up Tuesday tunes, having the pop-up markets there. Um, and then if I see any other announcements, whether they're from the police department or fire department or anything, we make sure to share them on this, um, Amory announcements, which I kind of consider a joint between city and community club announcements. Um, the giant ice cream sundae, like we just mentioned, is this Friday at at Michael Park. It's free to the public. There'll be ice cream, um, good things for the first one hundred adults, um, that have contributions from area businesses to lead them downtown to the Freedom Sales that are taking place Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And then I've scheduled a children's entertainment on the stage from noon till two P M. So we'll have some kindergarten musicals, and the public library is going to provide games, um, to play that day as well. I also have designed new Amory postcards over the last month. Then, um, Seth is coming, he, it's set to me at my house on Saturday. And once I've got that first two hundred and fifty, the plan is I'm just going to distribute them around town. They're free to the public, so I'm going to have some at the library, at the historical society, um, at the community center, and if there's any businesses that want to have them out for people. Um, I was hoping they were going to come in today, so I could give you all one of the first design. But, um, it's a backdrop of Amory with a little mini pictures on it that say, work, play, shop, eat, relax, and then at the bottom it just says, Amory Wisconsin, whatever your reason, we're glad you're here. Um, and so those will be available for the public whoever wants them and wants some postcards out. For me.
Good.
Do you have any questions?
Sounds good. Thank you. Yep. Usually I'm with my mother, but let's start with him tonight.
Oh. Oh, you confused me. He just walked.
I don't want to see a boat for the door too early.
Probably nothing will happen. Um, hello, everyone.
Hello.
Just a reminder to the public, sump pumps need to go to daylight and not into the city sewers. Sewer plant was having a lot of issues, you know, with four or five inches of rain.
Mm-hmm.
We spent a lot of time messing with that. Please, no wipes. Keep our sewer plant running as long as we can. They're gonna start Monday. I'm meeting with, uh, engineers. I'll be at the sewer plant, unloaded and making plans and running Monday it's starting. So anyway, the guys have been also doing a lot of brushing and storm cleaning, you know, from the storms and stuff. We had trees down on the streets. We've had all kinds of fun. New dock is in at Burke Street. Poles are in at the beach. Oh, could last another thirty years, hopefully. Pickleball courts, fifteenth, the week of the fifteenth, they're supposed to start blacktopping. Full for on camera, whatever. Or that's to make people happy. Um, like I said, the excavators dropped off the stuff, the sewer plant, um. Water line is finally in on Wisconsin. We got that done where it was freezing all the time and we connected, so the other house, old houses will be good now. Won't have that freezing up there anymore coming across the parking lot. And other than that, they've got everything painted uptown. That's good to go, crosswalks, all that's done, lot of sweep and lot of streets and maintenance and day-to-day stuff. Lot of parks. Any questions?
I had started with thunder a little bit this morning. I stopped at the pickleball players and told them that I was scheduled for that.
You're the one that keeps saying.
Save me some calls.
Yes, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Chuck.
That'd be great if we're not.
No, you are on camera.
Oh, good evening. First off, fireworks. Cause the school is all messed up.
They want to hear you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait, two check.
I moved it away. But, um, because the school is all under construction, the fireworks did get moved. It was got moved to Bobber Park, then it got moved again because of the area that we needed. So right now, the fireworks are going to be let off by the boat landing right across the street from W P C A. Is that correct?
Correct.
I asked him, cause Mitchell's organizing it, cause he's gonna be in charge of it. So, so across from W P C, and the reason that is because the, um, over at Bobber Park, people can sit in the grass and they can watch it from there. He should have a pretty decent view from there. That's the reason it got moved over along with the area that they need to light on. And Jeff is gonna block it off, and of course Dan and the police department or police chief is going to, uh, do traffic control and all that kind of good stuff.
It would seem that there's a map on Facebook, so, um, if any people are looking where exactly the seating is and parking and stuff, there is a map on Facebook, so that was helpful to get that up.
But you're gonna, it's gonna be on a flatbed, go down.
Launch them up from the airboat on the. Um, so that's it for the fireworks. Um, any questions on that? Okay. Um, recently we had three people join the fire department, leaving one spot open. Uh, as soon as we get, um, this other applicant, uh, his physical and get all the paperwork back, he'll, he'll be the fourth one and our roster will be full.
That's awesome.
That is great. It's been a long time since I've seen our roster.
It's real great.
So, um, yep, the, the guys that, uh, um, are out there, um, recruiting, one does a heck of a job, but he's a barber. And he goes, this guy just come in and ask, and he goes, tell him come up. And, um, so yeah, um, we'll, we'll have a full roster. I, um, just, um, sent the bill or paid the bill rather for Wisconsin State Fire Chiefs, uh, not chiefs, but the firefighters association, I paid for thirty-five people, and now we're gonna have thirty-six, so we're gonna be able to roster. Along with our explorers, our, we just got three new explorers too. The whole deal is working really well. Um, good, it's good to see. Um. A while ago, um, we were talking about, um, doing incident command, um, for case we have a tornado or whatever in the city and getting city council members and everything else involved, because if anything goes above and beyond what we can do for incident command, then it's, you guys will have to take over and, and move it on up so we get more money. Well, Lisa McMahon asked me if I wanted to host an incident command training, um, at the fire station. And I told her, yeah, I would, and right now it's scheduled for January eighteenth. She really hasn't given me all the details as far it, what it's all gonna entail, but he wants, uh, it's gonna be a tabletop type deal. He wants pictures of our trucks, all that kind of stuff, so, um, be working with Lisa here quite a bit for, for a while and to get that going, so more info, more info to come. So anyway, it's scheduled for January eighteenth. Uh, June nineteenth and through the twenty-third, Mitch and I went to Wisconsin State Fire Chiefs Conference, um. There was a retired captain from Seattle that gave some classes up there. Um, really motivated captain, um, he, a truck captain, um, he ran the station up there, um, came back. I came back with some really good info on how to make the fire station a little bit better, um. Um, his class, the, the main one was this house rocks and it told everything about how he and his group, and he only had ten, twelve, uh, firefighters in his station. They only had three trucks, but how he got, kept his people going, so. I backed some pretty good information, so I wasn't just down there swimming in the dirt. Another thing is we went, when we went to the president's dinner, I had to, um, uh, actually, yeah, an honor of sitting with, uh, superior chief and gotten to talking about training. And he, what Duluth does, or what Superior does rather, is they have Connex boxes or shipping containers and everything. Um, and I asked him, so how many you have for your training, your members? Said, six, you know, eight. He goes, no, we got over fifty. He goes, we actually have a city out of Connex boxes, and that's how we do all our training. So next week I'm on vacation, so I'm hopefully gonna try to, I'm gonna try to get up to Superior and see how they do it. I'd like to bring some of them back, and I talked about it with the, at the fire committee meeting, um, it seemed like they were in favor of training, and if everything goes well to put it into next year's budget, um, maybe get along, uh, get together with some other fire departments. And we need an area to have these, but we can have realistic fires, because now with the D N R regulation and stuff, it makes it really hard for houses to get burnt. We don't get that realistic training anymore. The burn trailer comes from W I T C or, or Northwood Tech, that is propane, spray water on it.
So it means like you stage a, one of these containers as a house or as some other thing?
Yep, you set them all up, and you know, you can have three-story house, you got three of them, you got three-story house, um. Stand up on end, and you got a forty-foot house, or you know, forty feet up, so you can stairways and everything else. And you, you, hay is real big for the smoke and stuff. Yeah, so it's really good training. You actually get out of them. I know assistant chief Mitch was, um, for years has been wanting to do it, and then, and this opened our eyes a little bit. He goes, yeah, the training is really good, so. I know I'm talking on and on and on. Anyway. Five fifteenth, we'll be having, uh, training at the Amory Airport for airplane crashes, um, fires, all that kind of good stuff. So that should be, uh, pretty decent training. Um, second quarter payroll, we had a hundred and twenty-five hours of training and a hundred and eighty-six hours of education, which is pretty good, so, yeah. Like city council, fire department ain't sitting still either, so that's pretty good. Uh, maintenance is done on the ladder truck, the last invoice, fourteen thousand, six hundred ninety-nine dollars, um. And lastly, let's let you guys know, let everybody out there know, um, I will be having surgery on my feet, um, so I will be, um, out for roughly four months. Um, so we're gonna be having our personal assistant chief get sworn in, and then that way he can do all the duties as I would. It's only temporary. I'll be back, I'll be, I'll be around. Yeah, it can't get away from me. I'll, I'll go up there, I'll see what they're doing. Anyway, so. Any question? I'm, I'm trying to make this laugh, because right now my wife is packing the truck, so. He went back out and do.
Yeah. Yeah. So you initially you talked about that meeting you went to, what was the best takeaway that you got?
Best takeaway I got is Friday, how, how to keep the guys motivated in order to stay on the department, um, was a big one. Um, how, how you actually treat them, um, is the really big one. Um, you know, and we, like I said, we got a full roster, you know, we're doing, but it ain't me, it's our firefighters, that, that's. It, it's their deal. Um, they're doing an outstanding job at promoting and recruiting, and that's a good deal. Oh.
It's great.
Yep, so they're doing something right.
Thank you, Charlie.
You bet.
Nobody's packing a truck at my house, so I don't have to stay. June has been a busy month. I have been working on a variety of zoning-related projects between ordinance updates, rezoning requests, and just general zoning permits. I also spent a fair amount of time working with the auditors to try and get them their final information and things like that. I think they have almost everything that they need. They'll let me know if something's missing. They always do. And then I also spent a good amount of time in June working on our Department of Revenue reports. We have quite a few of them that are due at the end of June, beginning of July, so I got all of those off the state, so we're in compliance with all of our reports. The last one I have to do for July, I think, is our liquor one by the fifteenth, and that'll be easy to do. All of the businesses have received their liquor licenses, though. They started on the first of July, and they've been distributed to all of the businesses, their licenses for liquor, tobacco, and operators are out, so they should be in compliance with the state. On Monday, the utility meters were read. The bills will be going out in the next week or so, with them being due back on August fifteenth, um, to avoid any late charges. Also, last week, the, um, the absentee ballots for August thirteenth election went out in the mail. So people should be getting their absentee ballots, or should have already gotten their absentee ballots in the mail. I've gotten about fifteen of them back already, so there's been a good turnout of absentee ballots that have come back already. And then on top of that, we will have in-person absentee voting starting on the thirtieth of, or of July for August's election, so it's that Tuesday before the election, and it'll be noticed in the paper also for people to know when they can come in. We'll get our special voting deputies out to the nursing homes and things like that to get that taken care of also. And then in two weeks, I will be attending U W Green Bay's Clerk Treasurers Institute. It's my last year of clerk training as part of that institute, and then I'll have a follow-up year of treasurer training next year. So that'll be in two weeks, so that's all virtual, so I don't actually have to go to Green Bay, so it's more cost-effective that way, actually. Alright, any questions?
Thank you, Taylor.
There was a couple, uh, not for Taylor necessarily. I just want to quickly, Tiana, our, our, all our projects are where the city needs to be. Uh, as far as scheduling and so on, it goes. And I talked about the wastewater complexes started and the, the, uh, pri- the project told on Sundance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Give a brief update on.
Yeah.
Okay. Um. So, the Whitstock project is, they sent the plans over to M S A, um, to review. Um, Eric Barclay, um, engineer at M S A reviewed those plans, um, and we sent comments, comments back to the city um, on those plans, so we'll need to probably have a follow-up meeting with how the city wants to move forward in terms of what would you like to go back, um, to Whitstock and say needs to be improved on those plans before you move forward. Um, the next item with Whitstock is that, um, we will be taking, um, costs for developers agreement to the finance meeting next Tuesday, I believe, July ninth, so that'll be on there, that we'll discuss kind of what we wanted to put in there. How that ended was, um, we recommended that you put, um, your, it's fifty percent, but I recommend that you put up to a certain dollar amount, because obviously, construction can go on and there can be contingencies, so, um, I think that it would be wise to put up to an amount with what the TIF can sustain, instead of just putting fifty percent, um, and then having the risk of there being, you know, a hundred thousand dollar contingency that then the city's on the hook for fifty thousand dollars of, so, um. That's all kind of being fleshed out still. Um, they have a lot of their private development that they had in the cost, so, um, we're trying to have them make sure that that gets taken out, because not the city's responsibility to pay for anything that's related to the private development of costs, so, um, a lot of that was in the comments of the plans, um, and things like that, so that's kind of where Whitstock is. Um, I would assume that if they can get their plans fixed, or however the city wants to move forward with adjustments, um, and how finance wants to discuss, um, the dollar amount for the developers agreement, you could potentially get looking forward on, um, executing that in the next couple of months, so. That's Whitstock, and I think what else we got, um. TIF ten, everything's done in terms of, um, creation for medians. We are finalizing the base packet of that, and that'll be submitted to the state by, um, September thirtieth. And, um, then that'll be active as of January one, twenty twenty-four. That's TIF ten, um, M S A is currently assisting with ongoing planning services, so any zoning administration questions that Taylor or the city has, um, we're assisting with some of those things, um. Another tid-related item was the potential hotel development that we're having discussions on. Um, we'll also be discussing that at the finance committee meeting on the ninth. Um, M S A ran a cash flow analysis on what would come in an increment if, um, the hotel was put in there, so, um, they, they need to, the developer needs to come back with new blueprints with a new estimate, um, and that may change the increment, but, um, right now I think we're all kind of in preliminary stages of what that would look like, and finance needs to look at it and decide kind of how much does the city want to potentially give, um. You don't want to put all your eggs in one basket is, um, something that we like to recommend if you're gonna give a large chunk of money to a developer, so. Um, Hillcrest Drive, um, was ongoing, um, M S A engineers met with, um, Jeff and Taylor, I believe the beginning of June, um, to start talking about scoping for that, um, so that's moving along um, on the design process there, and then C D B G planning application, um, that will be going in before August first. So another thing that Taylor and I discussed, which, um, is unfortunate, but the city is no longer eligible for C D B G P F projects, um. HUD recently rele- released their L M I S D, which is their low to moderate income summary data. That's updated every five years, so they updated that, and as of August first, the city is no longer fifty-one percent L M I for community-wide projects. So you would have been previously, um, you still are, which is why we can still apply for this planning, as long as it's submitted prior to August first, um, but in terms of the C D B G P F, community-wide, you can no longer apply unless you go through some extra hoops, so. If you do think that the city is indeed fifty-one percent or greater L M I, there are some things that you could potentially do. Um, we did a random sample survey for the city of Barron last fall to qualify them, because they dropped five years ago when the new data came out, but they were ninety percent certain that their community was fifty-one percent L M I. So we went through the process of doing a random sample survey, and indeed, they were sixty-eight percent L M I, so this year they went back up, so if that's something that the city thinks you are, um, it's something that we can discuss. It qualifies you for the next five years, so you could potentially, depending on projects you have, get two rounds of C D B G in there, but obviously, it's all kind of dependent on what projects you have on upcoming and if they qualify. Um, and so that's community-wide projects. You can still apply for, um, residential projects. You still had to have to go through the income survey process to qualify a residential street, um, but just an update on that one, um. Yes.
So how important is that?
The L M I? Well, I mean, it, you no longer can apply for community-wide projects through C D B G public facilities, so, for example, Keller Avenue was a C D B G project, you got a million dollars there, um. Other projects you could do is, um, water towers, wells, things like that, that are technically community-wide, that benefit the entire community. You could have gotten a million dollars, potentially. Obviously, you know, you still have to go through the competitive application process, but, um, you were eligible to just apply for it, so now you're no longer eligible to say we have a community-wide eligible project, we're gonna do an application. There's extra hoops to jump through.
So why were we not eligible?
So.
We'll make too much money.
God, but.
And that's why I say if you believe that your community is fifty-one percent or greater, then you can go through a process, um. But it's based off of the American Community Survey, so they update that, I think, every ten years, but HUD grabs data from it and updates their own L M I data every five years, so this data is twenty sixteen to twenty twenty currently, so that'll be in effect for the next five years, and then in five years, it could jump again, um. But you were at like fifty-two point one percent, and I think you dropped down to like in the thirties, um, so you, you did jump significantly down, so.
Well, that isn't necessarily a bad thing.
No.
No, and that's, you know.
Right, not, it's, it's not a great thing for the C D B G program, and
I, I agree with that.
Grants where you need to be disadvantaged, but in terms of what it says about the community is that, yes, you're not low to moderate income, your community, the majority is not, so, yeah. Just an update on the C D B G status of things, um, what it means for the future of.
Is the C D B G grant funding, would, does that, would that apply to our, uh, talked about daycare, uh, building?
So the tricky thing with that one is that you would have to somehow push that it benefits the entire community, which gets tricky, because is it benefiting the entire community or just the parents of the individuals that have children there, so. Obviously, it could be something that could be posed or could have been posed to C D B G, um. They're open to asking the question, but I, I don't think they would have gone for it, because unless you have some way that you're going to have it benefit the entire community, um, which would be kind of tricky in the daycare sense, but.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Oh, one other thing M S A helps us with is our G S I or whatever.
Oh, yes, G I S.
G I S, there you go.
Alright.
Thank you. Um. Ms. Finance, have anything you want to say about the, the rule?
Well, um, sure, uh, I, I think what we're, we're looking at, um, you know, the, the loans that we have are, are at good rates, okay, so we're not gonna do anything there. But at times, we, we have extra money, basically. All like, need to be paid and things like that. We're, we're, and we're also. Need to be paid and things like that, we're, and we're also, uh, looking at. Leap accounts, uh, so we can. One, get, uh, u- utilize our money better. And, and, and then the second piece is that interest rates are at a higher rate. And we're not capturing that, so we're working on that as well, so I, I met with one banker, I got two more to beat with and. And we'll keep working at it.
Thank you. About childcare?
Um, so we had our first meeting on Monday. Um, we are, there's kind of two things going on, so. The Plan Commission has requested that we. Investigate the old hospital space a little bit further. Um, so Derek Construction has agreed to look at that space for free. Um, and give us an estimate on what it would look like to update that space. I personally have a lot of. Reservations about going down that road, just based off of our past experience and who owns it and who's investing the money in it? And where is the rent going? And I think that gets really complicated. Um, so it's not completely being ruled out, we're investigating it a little bit further, but, um, that's one avenue. The other thing that is happening right now is Paul Schaefer's looking at getting some more concrete numbers on the amount of acreage we would need. In order to build the kind of building that we are looking at, so then we can go to Plan Commission with a few different property locations and say. Where does this make sense, um, so that we can start thinking about next steps? Um, another potential thing that has been thrown out, um, by different people. Which I have not spoken to the school about this, but, um, there's interest in maybe talking to the school district about. Running whatever we build as an extension of Clubhouse. Or creating some sort of feeder system where we have a lot of the littles at this new location and then they move into Clubhouse. Um, so there's a lot of different ideas still up in the air. But we are trying to get something concrete that we can go to Plan Commission with because we feel pretty stuck at this point. We just keep saying, there's a problem, we need to deal with the problem, um, so now we need to actually start dealing with the problem. And April and I have spoken about grants, um, the one thing that we're concerned about a little bit is that certain grants would require us to continue to maintain the property. Depending on what the stipulations of the grants are, um, so it was suggested maybe we ask a childcare provider to give us. Fifty percent of the build cost and then we use TIF dollars because it would be generating tax revenue to pay for the other part. So lots of different ways we can attack it, just trying to figure out where it goes, who runs it and how do we pay for it.
Oh, good question. Um, okay, uh, public protection? Nothing to report?
I don't think so.
No. All right, and. Who did I forget? Personnel.
Yeah, um, nothing major, just, just working on city administrator stuff. Reminder, I've only received two sets of information on your top five qualities. Um, so if you haven't sent me your top five qualities for our city administrator, let me know.
Okay. All right, thank you for those reports and hopefully we can keep our public informed a little bit better.
Highlight, just one of, there's on the library director's report.
Yeah, I didn't see, but it, no, reports in there, um, yeah.
The only question I have is about the, you know, humidity in the lower level. Is that? Something to, that, I don't know what's happening, but it sounds like.
Then shoes can turn both, so instead of dealing with. The HVAC people actually put the system in, I got a hold of countryside, he's gonna get a hold of me next week, we're gonna come down and have a different. Person go through it, see if we can figure something out here.
Good, I, I just wanted to make sure.
Than the same old world, try this, try that type thing, that's not working.
Uh, books, books and humidity don't go well, but it also sounds like now the electronics on the three D printer were affected too, so.
And then I've also gone back to the library or store and whatever. Got a hold of an electrician, we're gonna look at why the elevator doesn't work, you know, when the generator's on and then. Put up some lighting down there too, that'll run off it.
Good. Thanks, I just wanted to highlight that since she wasn't here.
And you're on the board, is there anything else you wanna highlight?
I've got a good library.
Heather's report is, I just wanna comment, I'll read that and to see our public library. Working with the Pope County Public Health Department. To reach out and make it easier and more convenient for the citizens of our community. Benefit from the programs that they have available. You know, the vaccinations and the weight clinic. And I just want to give them a shout out for doing that and, uh, working on something that's good for everybody.
Thanks. Thank you. All right, uh, engineering service RFP review.
I guess you received, so I've received, three RFPs were received as part of the. Process of going out for RFP, these are the three that came back, you were provided with all three of them, um. I guess. You had asked to go out for RFP for engineering services, I think to try and avoid having to go out for RFP for each one.
Right.
But we don't actually have to go out for RFP for professional services. So we can just, instead of having it. I guess I don't know how you wanna move forward with it, but if you don't actually wanna pick one of these, cuz we do work heavily with two of the three right now. Um, it is written in our. Purchasing policy and the way that it functions is it says that we don't have to go out for RFP for, um, professional services. So we don't have to go out for RFP every time we wanna do a project, it's when there's bidding involved. So, you know, it's up to you if you actually wanna pick one, but right now we're heavily involved with SEH and MSA for. Various things.
And on the other end, it makes life a lot easier if we stick with the two.
Yeah, I, I, I've. My first, uh, thought in going for RFPs for engineer, engineering firms is, was. Doing RFP for every single project we got is so cumbersome, it adds another thirty to sixty days to everything that the city. Wants to do, um. Since we went out for RFPs, I kinda changed my mind on that, and I think we do have, uh, two good firms that we work with. And I would. If we do something with it, I would like to designate the two of them. MSA has been more involved with the financial, the TIFs and so on and so forth. Uh, and I don't see any reason to, we should, uh, change that. And SEH has been heavily involved with the actual, uh, getting your hands in the dirt type projects. And, uh, I personally am very satisfied with them, so, um. I don't know the best way to proceed with that, but I, I would be in favor, I, I do of keeping, we don't do anything.
I, I agree with you and I agree that if we just don't do anything, we, we've more or less decided that what we're doing is just fine. Since we do have projects coming up, when you have projects, we still do.
If anything that's construction related, we have still. Bids for that. The professional services aspect though, like saying we need help with our airport master plan, saying we need help with our TIFs. That doesn't require an RFP, we've just been selecting one.
You have some comments? If I may? Um, first of all, um, I think that this RFP is very poorly written. It is, uh, a copy and paste. Type of method that was, I, it's really obvious was pirated from another community. That I think is difficult for any engineering firm to respond to. Because it's not about a specific project. Um, I do know an engineering firm that contacted the city to ask some questions. And they were treated, uh, poorly. And they were told, we're not gonna answer any questions. About the RFP. Um, you know, I think, uh, I have no complaints whatsoever about the firms that we're working with. Well, they've really been good to us, um, you know, my hopes are if we have a new city administrator, we have one of the expertise and caliber. Where we are less dependent on consultants to do things like run TIF performers and other things that we. Uh, used to always do right here in house that our administrator did for us. Um, I guess I don't think that there is anything wrong with, uh, since these three firms have went to the trouble. To respond to this, respond to this, um, and taken their time and their expertise and their staff. I guess I don't think there's anything wrong with, uh, letting them give a presentation. To a committee or to the board about the services that they do and, um, what they have to offer. You know, it's kind of like, you know, I feel the same way about other professional services, auditors and legal services as well. That it doesn't hurt every once in a while to see what else is going on and what else is out there. That's just in my humble opinion.
Part is established that we're very happy with the people that we've been working with. And plan to stay with them, so I don't know that that would be advantageous to have any presentations.
How do we know what else is out there though if we don't?
You only've got an RFP to look at, and the ones that I've seen, you know, there's nothing that I can see that would really, uh, motivate me to make a change. That's my opinion anyway.
If I can comment too, I, I think because of. The advancements in technology and stuff, you need to hire outside help to. To do the technical part of, of. Whatever it is. It, you know, um, it sounds good, you know, we can do it in-house. But the problem is that we're not experts. And so if we're doing it in-house, we're probably not doing it well. Um, which is just my opinion.
I did a good job when I did it.
Yeah, yeah. Sometimes is that you can't afford to keep that knowledge on staff.
Right.
Those, you know, the expertise like that, it's great. The, the job is expanded. So that there are a lot more technical aspects, a lot more regulations, a lot more other things, so.
You're, you're paid for their knowledge.
I, I face that all the time. When you can't afford to keep that kind of person on staff, so you hire the hired gun.
Yeah.
But you need somebody who has that expertise and you also have to interview to know if they have what they say they have, without doubt.
Well, it's troublesome if we, if we put an RFP out there, it was a cut and paste from another municipality, if that's, uh. If that's what was actually done and it's that obvious, I don't think that is professional at all and who would have put that together?
It, it appears that way.
All right, I don't, I don't wanna get, or not, or not critiquing former employees, so, um. I think, uh, if there's consensus that we. Uh, just keep the two that we have and, and designate them for.
Do you actually wanna designate anything or just leave it as nothing and? Instead have the consensus, you're not going to move forward with anything and we just. Pick people.
That's up, yeah.
I, I don't know that we need to do anything.
I like nothing.
Especially if we don't have a specific project in, because I'm not against looking at other options when we have something specific to look at. But I am very happy with what our current process is.
The city employees are also very happy with the people that we work with, with different projects right now, so.
So is the mayor, just. Just, I do have a. That's true.
I guess, do you have a motion on file saying that you're not going to move forward with any of them, just?
I think that would be appropriate.
So we can officially, I can send out emails to the ones that sent them in and like, we're not going to do anything.
I'd make that motion that we are not going to. Change the status with the representation that we have. Is that good enough?
Or not select a city engineer?
There a second?
No second.
Motion's made and seconded to, uh, not select a specific. Uh, city engineer, but to, uh, continue with the process that we have in place at present.
Can I say something?
Yes.
In between the motion, I just, I would like to say, and, and perhaps we can acknowledge the three companies that did put something in. Putting these things together is not easy and I think they were very, um, professionally done and it was. There definitely was a lot of work put into it, um, especially, you know, with the two that we work with directly currently. Um, a lot of history and a lot of, here's what we're doing currently, um, so these things don't happen easily, so. To the three companies, thank you for putting the effort into making, to getting this information that we had requested. Anyways, call question.
We're gonna put together a letter thanking them.
Yeah.
Oh, you're gonna hear the motion in a second? On favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So ordered. Ordinance one, three, two, zero, two, four, section four fifty, or chapter four fifty, section eighteen, our two, two family residential district. And this is to clean up. Our zero lot line, uh, duplexes that we've never really had a.
Yeah, we've been working under the assumption and telling people that they can build a zero lot line duplex in an R two. Because you can have a duplex in an R two, but it never actually technically allowed for zero lot line duplexes. We already have some that are built, being built and ones that we've told people that. We would accept, so this basically cleans it up, it took a lot of the wording from the zero lot lines that were already in R three. But some of it was modified at Plan Commission with what Plan Commission thought was best for the ordinance and actually we're gonna look at. R three zero line duplexes and see if that ordinance should be updated also. We did have a public hearing about it also and nothing was, no, no public was there to speak.
So the recommendation from the Planning Commission is to approve that ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty four to amend. Uh, chapter four fifty, section eighteen regards to R two, two family residential district. Um, zero lot line residences.
Second that.
Motion's made and seconded to approve ordinance thirteen, twenty twenty four. Says, so stated. All those in favor? We'll call.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Van Summeren.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Elkin.
Yes.
Plannum. Manor.
Yes.
Unanimously carried. Item number five, empty lots impacted by ordinance O two, twenty twenty four, amending chapter four fifty, section fourteen. Retaining to the WWTP setbacks.
So this came up, it was discussed at finance last time and finance had a consensus on what they thought should be done, but it. We wanted it to go to the full council so that we could have an official statement out there basically of. What was felt. I guess, do you want me to tell what finances or does finance wanna speak what finance thought?
I, I, I can speak to that and I'm just going back to, um, emails that were, um, were. Sent to us in communication from our attorney in regards to that, and it was, it was the recommendation of council. That we do nothing. Um, that it's not the city's responsibility to, uh, make accommodations for. Those residences or, um. People that, owners that were impacted by the ordinance, um, and the, uh, change in ordinance. In regards to that, and that's coming from our legal counsel.
There a second to that motion?
Is that a motion?
Or I'll make that a motion. We'll take the guidance from legal counsel to do. To not act on. On. Uh, anything in regards to the, or any compensation in regards to, uh, the lots impacted by ordinance zero two, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to, uh, adopt that amending. To include no renovation to owners, uh, that are impacted. By the new WWATP. Oh, any discussion?
I still feel like that is a slap in the face in a financial setback for. The residents that had purchased extra land. With the potential of building and selling a home off of those lots.
Did we have it evaluated to see if they were even buildable though? I thought that they weren't considered buildable lots.
I quite honestly, I know there was discussion of it, I quite honestly don't know where it ended up being. I quite honestly, I know there was discussion of it. I quite honestly don't know where it ended up being.
I think before we approve that, we at least need to do the due diligence and find out. What these lots are worth now versus what they were worth before this ordinance went into place.
Let me say this, that, that ordinance, that five hundred foot setback has been in place since nineteen seventy two. None of the current owners of any of that property. Uh, would have been able to purchase that property. Without legally getting the information because it was, it was designated and stated in, in city council minutes. That that was in addition to. The, uh, to their legal deed. It was a, supposed to be put on their deed. Uh, I believe.
Does it, does any way to confirm that if it was put on their deed?
That, that's, those, those parties that were owners of the land at that time. All signed a paper saying they were okay with that. Um, so. Um, there was no restriction, there wasn't a restriction necessarily on it, but every time that there was, there has been something. Uh, what usually was, that was signed off, was signed off twice, actually.
And actually I found something from the eighties that also referenced that they have to follow whatever's in our ordinance, which is not.
Well, so if there was a breakdown in communications. I believe that it probably came from the fact that no one gets a abstract anymore on their property. They get a piece of paper from. The insurance company that says, oh yeah, you're okay, you can, you know, do anything, but. So if there isn't any legal liability, to me it would be between the homeowner and the. Abstract folks that said, oh no, you can do whatever with these, you know, because they got a deed that, the deed. Was, was up to, you know, it's clear. So I don't, I, I, you know, I'm not denying that there could be some liability, but I don't believe it belongs to the city.
Okay. Well, we're to have that discussion. But I had some extensive conversations with, disagreeing with what we're saying, but do they move to go back on their own? Or disagreements or whatever and figure it out in there and so.
That's correct, because if, if the realtor's, if a realtor was involved and they failed to disclose that, that's on the realtor. Um, that they have to do that. If it was the. Count, the insurance company, the title insurance company, that's on them. Uh, because that hasn't, hasn't changed for fifty years. Um, and none of those houses, with the exception of probably Omer Nixon, maybe the one at the end of the street was, were there. Fifty years ago. So.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Question.
Question. All right, all in favor of, uh, of, uh. The motion to. I guess deny payment.
Yeah, take legal counsel's guidance and not act on compensation to owners impacted by the ordinance.
Okay, that's better. That sounds way better.
All in favor, we'll take a little call vote on this also.
Wilkinson.
Hey, yes.
Van Summeren.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Elkin.
Yes.
Plannum.
Yes.
Manor.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Resolution fourteen, twenty twenty four, then the sewer rate increase.
So this resolution was done up to do the next sewer rate increase that needs to be done of twenty one point seven five percent. As part of the, um. They put together that cash flow analysis of rates that needed to happen in order to. Basically move forward with our financing for the wastewater treatment plant. Um, so this is the next step increase that'll go into effect on October first. And with this resolution, we'll be able to put it in the newsletter to notify customers that goes out this month that it'll go up at the next quarter. We did do, vote to do the, um, the next phase of the rate case, but their suggestion was. At this point, this has to go through in order to meet all of our steps and then for future ones, we can reevaluate.
What's the status then of Eller's doing that additional work?
That would be that I need to get him the information and I haven't had time to do that at this moment. So that's sort of on me. Yeah, no, he sent me the list of what he needs, but that just hasn't made it to the top of my list. I'm hoping to get to it next week.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion, we approve resolution fourteen dash twenty twenty four sewer rate, titled sewer rate increase.
Second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of resolution fourteen, twenty twenty four, the sewer increase? Aye.
I think aye.
Opposed. So ordered. Item seven, information and discussion about city administrative recruiting firms and potential city interim city administrative process. And task frame with coming up with a list and I assume that we're going to get one.
So, um, all I have done is, uh, I have gathered information. And about five or six different firms and also gathered information, uh. Potential, um. Interim options. So I would like to just give pass along the information that I gathered. I did not, I made it very clear. We were not seeking. Any other pains. We were just only gathering information to put there to help us decide whether or not we would even want to do that. So I'm trying to open my document and it doesn't want to open. Okay, so maybe it will go over and open. There we go. So. Now we will kind of start, uh, with the, uh. With the larger, uh, firms that, um, we do this, this type of work. Unless you would like me to start with the interim first. Maybe I'll start with the interim first. Okay. So typically, uh, the interim, an interim would work about twenty hours. Uh, there's a number of options out there. Um, you know, one of them that I'm aware of is, um, a retired county administrator. I believe he charges around sixty dollars. Um, there also is potentially a retired planner available, but I don't know what they would charge. Um, there's also a, a recently retired city administrator who is also an engineer for a community our size north of us. Um, I haven't heard back from him yet. Um, also, uh, one of the recruitment firms, public administration associates. They can also provide an interim administrator. Who is someone who may want to be a candidate for a city administrator job here. And they would come in and work as an interim for twenty hours a week and they would also be a candidate. Um, typically, uh, not always, but typically those are not real experienced people. Uh, but that's kind of a trial thing. Um, you know, the F B runs, you know, around a hundred dollars an hour. Um, Gov HR also can supply, um, interim administrator. Or between ninety-eight and a hundred and nineteen dollars an hour. A couple of years ago and, um. Asiola M S A, um, was, uh, could potentially have provided Dave Rasmussen. As an interim administrator. I believe that was about two hundred dollars an hour, um, if I recall correctly. So those are some options on interims that I gather. Um, as far as recruiting firms.
Can I pause you first?
Yes.
How many hours a week would you say would be reasonable for an interim to be onsite working for us?
It depends upon, um, what's going on. That particular week can vary from week to week. I said that the average would be about twenty hours. There might be some weeks where you don't need them twenty hours. There might be other weeks where you would need them more than twenty. Um, it would be up to the council to decide if they want them to have, to attend meetings. What meetings they would want them to attend. So that, that usually is subject to a type of negotiation with the person who's interested in doing it. Some of them are willing to do it without a contract with the city. You don't like me, I don't like you, you know? Then there's that, that contractual items above. Some of them, um, do want to have a contract. So those are items that are negotiable.
I would think that it would also matter. Um, what the skill set was for that particular person, because then that would decide what kind of involvement they would have.
And some of these people are retired and they just do this for fun. Or are just doing it because they miss. You know what I mean? And, and we have skills that they aren't using and it's a little extra money and. You know, I mean, some of them just, they don't charge a lot. They just kind of do it more to have something to do, to get out of the house or. Whatever, you know, and other ones, they make a career out of just doing nothing but interim work. Uh, but it's not a, a benefited position where they would be, see that.
I think, uh.
I'm sorry. Well, the downside of, uh, talking to a private individual for, you know, the sixty dollar an hour person, if they have the qualifications to be able to do that job versus. They're the very expensive ones.
For the person that, um, I have in mind and I, because we're an open session, I'm not going to name names. As currently wrapped up is wrapping up the interim job in Baldwin. And it is a person that I've worked with as an interim. When I was in Asiola, he was their interim. Um, and he's a retired county administrator, um. You know, he'll, he'll do what you want him to do. He kind of just doesn't because just to kind of get out to do something. You know, um, but you would need to talk to him, see if you like him. You know, um, if he likes you, if he likes us, I think he would like us.
Well, I, I think, I think also not just with, you know, we're talking about two things. One of them is. We need to talk about or define what we're looking for in, in a city administrator. We also have to decide what do we want an interim to do? Because I don't know what I want an interim to do.
Yeah, and I, and I don't, I gotta say that, you know, that's fine for like, the council has to make the decision. On the job description, but in fact, the day to day. Um, falls on the mayor. And, um. And I think it also falls on the mayor as to how much time. They're going to spend there because, um. Some people work a lot faster than others do. Um, and I think you can make a case for almost any administrator to spend lots of time doing stuff. Uh, dealing with minutia, which I don't think is really necessary. But, uh. Uh, the, to me, the first step and before we talk about anybody, any people or anything is. Coming up with a job description.
Wow.
And then, um. Like I said, you know, I think the council makes a decision as to what that job description is for sure. But in fact, the day-to-day supervision is, comes from the mayor's office, which. Fortunate or unfortunate as me the next couple of years. So. Uh, before we jump in on anything, I think we need to seriously have a sit down and, and talk about. What kind of qualifications we want to see.
Well, some of that falls on personnel.
Yes.
Next week, I believe. So I think that, you know, getting that information and telling us what's available is really important to us. And now we have to go the next step and decide. How do we want to proceed? Who do, do we want somebody? Do we need somebody? Um, how much do we want them to do or what kinds of things? And we need to interview staff to find out, are there things that are not? Getting done or things that. Are getting pushed back or you can't get to before, before something else. It's a, it's a, it's all one. It can't be just. Decide on an interim or do this or.
Yeah.
Something I see them use a lot more and in my experience, the ones that I worked with. It primarily were used for project management, budget development. And monitoring and complex, uh, personnel situations.
Well, I just want to follow up on, and you, you make a very good point is that we, we have to get staff involved and get their input. Uh, because. We're not around enough to really understand.
We don't know what we don't know.
Exactly right, yeah.
So would you like interim city administrator added as an item on the personnel committee next week?
All right. I will say I've gone through the job description and highlighted and marked up all kinds of stuff, so I do have things to bring to the team. But I think we need to decide, do we want the job description to be the same for both? Because I, I don't know that that necessarily makes sense.
Yeah, I don't know that that's realistic, right, for an interim.
Yeah, no.
So what's the priority then, right?
Yep, and I think that it would be also important for us at that, at personnel to be able to get feedback from staff.
Mm-hmm.
At that point too, as to, you know, what's the day look like? What's the week look like? What's the month look like there? You know, it varies quite a bit and then. We've got building projects going on in different places and, and. People, you know, hotel things looking, you know, all of those things. Um, those are the things that if you're doing day-to-day, you can't. Service those as well as you'd like to. So maybe. If we, if we're going to talk at personnel, maybe we want to talk to personnel.
Yeah, do you want to just send out a message to the staff and say that anyone who has feedback is welcome to come and speak?
Yes, at that meeting.
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful.
There's no more comments.
If you have any feedback, you can give it to me.
So I'm going to start at the high end and work down through to the lower. So, um, right now the city race lake is with the board of professionals and administrator. Of course, they're like, like five or six. They're using Baker Tilly Virtual crap, used to be Virgil Kraus, they're a municipal auditing firm. Uh, they also do municipal fund accounting software and now they have branched out into the recruitment as well. Uh, their cost for the recruitment for the city race lake is twenty seven thousand dollars. Um, the next, uh, one I have is David Dronan Associates, Gary Wires. Uh, the city used them previously in the past. Uh, they do offer a two-year guarantee on their candidates. Uh, that if, uh, the, either the candidate or the city does not, are not happy at the end of two years. They'll do another search just for expenses. Now. The city did not utilize that feature in the past and in speaking to Gary Wires, that was five years ago, that is no longer available. Too much time has passed. Um, probably before. Well, no, I'll wrap this up first and then I'll go into the things that they all have in common of what they do. So, um, another one is Gov HR. Uh, they have several tiers of service that they do that you get to pick from. Um, they do a full scope recruitment that is twenty five thousand dollars. They do a limited scope that is twenty two thousand. Then they also do just a virtual recruitment, which is twelve thousand dollars. And an outreach recruitment for seven thousand dollars. I have a brochure from them that explains and differentiates the details. In between each one of these services that I would be happy to send out to each one of you. It's kind of too much to go through and, and read, you know, out loud. Uh, but I was pleased to see that there were different tiers. I had zoomed in before from them. So that must be something new for them. Okay, so the, uh, next one I have is public administration associates. Uh, they are, they do most of the recruiting in the state of Wisconsin. Um, is what they do. Um, I've worked with them several times. Uh, their fees are between thirteen thousand and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, um, they just recently completed their recruitment, uh, in Durand. Uh, for the city of Durand, they had twenty applicants. Uh, and they hired a person who was an applicant for the, for treasure job here. Um, they can do a scaled down search for us if we would like. Um, for six to eight thousand dollars. What that involves is they have in their talent pool. Uh, five to seven candidates that they would bring directly to us. And there would not be the going out to everywhere and the advertising, they would bring these people directly to us. Um, they also, uh, have the offer on the interim, their firm, if any of those candidates wanted to serve. As an interim, that's something that they could work with us on as well. Um, another one, uh, is Weld Riley, Prenn and Ritchie. Uh, they are. A, uh, labor, uh, and municipal law firm, uh, very. Uh, and municipal law firm, uh, very prominent in this part of the state. Uh, they did their equipment for the city of Cumberland. Uh, that recruitment costed uh thirteen thousand dollars. They have a range depending upon the scope of services that you want them to do. And perform, they say between ten and fifteen thousand. Uh, they also did city of Blumer. Uh, they do uh would also can write and give legal advice to do a job description. Because in that high level position that there's things you do and don't want in that. Uh, they also in uh speaking to John Bailing, um. They also could assist us with, um, I I talked to him about our ordinances having these provisions in. For the administrator position and um he had never heard of anything like that before. Um, he could also help us clean that up a little bit. So, I mean, they're, they're a full service municipal law firm and this is also another service they provide. Uh, they also do scoring grids, uh, their background checks. Are pretty uh are more extensive than um some of the ones that you typically see. Something that just about everybody does is uh the advertising. They uh do the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, the Wisconsin City County Management Association. I C M A, uh, which is international, um, the management association. Uh, some of them do W M C A. Um, some of Weld Riley Print and Richie, they do social media things and they do Indeed and LinkedIn as well. Um, and some of them will do, um, you know, the Midwest associations as well, Minnesota. Michigan, Iowa, Illinois. But that is kind of also whatever the city council wants them to do. They're flexible, you know, to to do what the city wants them to do. So typically the processes look something like. The advertising, video interviews, a community profile uh is put out for candidates. Um, you know, some of them, some communities like to do an employee panel. Uh, some of them like to do kind of a community stakeholder leadership panel. Some do a public meet and greet, some do a writing sample. And uh, most of them now do a type of personality or psychological. Uh, uh, personality trait type of testing to see uh. To reveal some, some, to help make a judgment on whether or not. A particular person's style you think would be a good fit for your community or not. So there are a lot of um options out there. These are the most, you know, commonly used ones. Um, so that is the information that I gathered.
I think before I'm willing to make a decision about any of that, I want to see an updated budget. And find out where the money's coming from, because some of those numbers are pretty big numbers. And I recognize that we're not currently paying a city administrator, but if we're bringing in an interim that's. Charging somewhere between a hundred and two hundred dollars an hour and all these different things, the money's going to add up really quickly.
I was going to say, the, the only place you're going to potentially find leftover money is in salaries. There's not going to likely be leftover money anywhere else.
I don't think there's going to be. I think maybe after we get our audits processed and all the adjustments made. And take a look at what our fan fund balance is doing. I mean. I think that that's about the only option we're going to have is to designate part of the undesigned portion.
Which once again adds to the idea that we don't need to be in a hurry about doing this, so.
Well, I'd rather take the time to do it right because.
Yep.
We, we need to make it, we need to make a good decision.
I, I would say neither because a lot does end up on your shoulders that. You know, make sure you communicate with us if there's needs and things going on and that's. Um, and then we can get through it.
We'll tell Rick he needs to help.
Well, I'll tell him.
Guy will buy thing by the barrel. Where I get the last word.
Yeah. It's, that's good, that's good to make sure that we support you and make sure that you don't get overwhelmed.
Exactly.
Motion to adjourn?
Well, I'm saying, thank you. This is some really great information.
Can you share, can you share some of that, put that on paper to all of us?
And, and too, I forgot to mention that they all said that um they would be willing to come up and. Speak to a committee or speak to the council or, or whatever as well.
One, I'm encouraged to know that, you know, the majority of them you mentioned have. Worked locally, so you know, that's really with our area, you know, and it's not all down in Milwaukee and.
That would be one of my top criteria, whoever we either has to be familiar with Wisconsin. Because we're rather unique.
So do you want anything on personnel next week about the funds or do you want to wait on that for now?
I think we need to know what we're looking for.
Quick, I just wanted to make sure.
Well, I'd, I'd like to have the, you know, paper forms that, that Fran talked about so we can, so I can look at them and.
They also, um, uh, each one of these firms has a website and most of the information is on their website. They have a, a client list of. Everybody, you know, in the years that they worked for them and. You know, there's really an abundance of information, so I'll, I'll put that together as well and.
Well, so. You know, I don't want to create too much work for you. You know, I think typically what I'm used to is you. You select like the top two or the top three. And then you start looking at them a lot closer and stuff.
Well, uh, you know, I don't feel comfortable making that decision on behalf of the council. Certainly so.
Okay, got you, okay.
Can you add to the agenda, looking at what we want that process to look like? Because depending on what we want, that could impact which firm we go with too. Um, so I think it would be helpful for us to talk about the process a little bit that we're hoping for.
It's encouraged, there were some option instead of just. Instead of just the big lump sum, you know, full blown thing. I was encouraged.
Recognize that not everybody can afford.
Yeah.
The same thing.
Okay, we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Second, in all favor, and stand up.